So, good morning, everybody. It is Thursday, August 20th, 9:30 AM. And today is another Winchester City Council Planning Meeting, virtual, as they all have been since lockdown. We have Dave Shaw, Senior Democratic Services Officer, who will now make a roll call of members attending the committee. Over to you, Dave.
Yes, thank you, Chair. We have apologies, first of all, from councillor Clea, and we have councillor Bentote as deputy member. So I will there start with your good self. Councillor Evans?
I'm present.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Present.
And you, councillor Leaming? I will return to councillor Leaming in a moment. Councillor McLean?
Well, hello, welcome.
Councillor McLean?
Are you not hearing me?
No, sorry, I can't hear you, sorry. Yes, there was just a little bit of noise in the background there.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Councillor Reed? Chair, I've had an excuse that councillor Reed has had a few difficulties joining the meeting, so I will return to councillor Reed in a moment. Right, and councillor Rutter?
Present, Chair, thank you.
Okay, councillor Bentote?
Present.
Thank you. I will run again through the members I didn't quite hear from from the first time. Councillor Leaming?
Chairman, we can see councillor Leaming on the screen, but his microphone is bringing out a very squeaky pitch, Chair.
Yeah, you're sounding a bit like Mickey Mouse, councillor Leaming. This has happened before with your microphone, and I think the solution last time was to leave the meeting and come back in. So we'll let you do that. But, Dave, there were councillor Reed and councillor Raffel, aren't there?
Yes, I'll just run through councillor Reed and councillor Raffel. So I've not heard from councillor Reed or councillor Raffel. Councillor Leaming is going to rejoin the meeting in a moment. So, in the interim, shall I go through the officers that are present in the meeting? And we'll just give them a little bit of time.
Yes, of course. Housekeeping, and then we'll go back to those members that we haven't yet managed to hear from in the meeting. So over to you to introduce the officers present today.
Yes, of course, Chair, thank you. First of all, we have Julie Pinnock as a Service Lead for Built Environment. We have online Fiona Sutherland, Legal Officer. And then we also have for the case officers, Hannah Harrison for Item 7. And also joining us will be Katie Morgan, Principal Landscape Architect for Item 7 as well. We have Catherine Watson will be present for Item 8, and Rose Lister for Item 9. They're the ones for the morning. I will give you the offices for the afternoon after the 2 o'clock start. From Democratic Services, there's myself, Dave Shaw, and I'm in the St Giles Room in the city offices. And I'm joined in the city offices, but in the mill room by Matthew Watson, who's supporting the meeting today. And just to confirm the public representation for the first item, which is Item 7, Hayden Barn. We have Jackie Ware, who's going to speak in objection. We have a parish council representative, Mr Mark Rogers. We have councillor Hugh Limby as a ward member, and Dan Roycroft, who is the agent for the application as well for it. Moving on, for the Hampshire Constabulary item, there's no public speakers. And then for the final item of the morning, we have Craig Lawson, agent, speaking on behalf of 24 Langton Close, Winchester. Thank you, that's the officers that are present and the speakers for the morning.
And we'll go back to those three councillors in a minute. So a few housekeeping issues for everybody. Members, a reminder to keep your microphones and cameras off unless you're speaking, of course. I tend to leave my video on, but I always turn my mic off when not speaking. Please let the officers know if you have any IT problems. It could affect your right to vote, as you know. Members of the public, same for you. Could you please keep your microphones on mute and turn your cameras off until it's your turn to speak? When you do speak, you will have three minutes. You will see a clock in front of you, which will give a countdown. And when we get to three minutes, an alarm will sound, and I'm afraid I will have to stop you if you are still going. And then it could be that the members of the committee want to ask you questions. Then we will have questions on the report and to the case officer, and then debate, and then the decision. A reminder to everybody that this meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the website where the recording will remain. And, Dave, we have a new addition to our communication today. So I'll pass over to you to tell everybody what that is.
Yes, thank you, Chair. In addition to the audio stream, the meeting has been recorded in Microsoft Teams. And at the close of the meeting later today, the item will be, or tomorrow, the item will be placed on the councillor's YouTube section and then can be viewed as a Microsoft Teams meeting from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, as usual, members and officers will use the chat function. And I will check with the vice chair, councillor Jane Rutter, every now and then, as I would in the meeting if we were all sitting together, who has put their name down to ask a question or join debate. So I think we've got to the point, Dave, where we need to see whether we've got councillors Leaming, Reed and Raffel.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Chair. Can I run through the remaining areas of the roll call then, please? Councillor Leaming?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, that's much clearer, thank you.
Good.
Councillor Raffel?
Yes, I'm here now.
Perfect, thank you. And also councillor Reed. We don't seem to have councillor Reed still within. Oh, excellent news, thank you very much. Councillor Reed? Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. That seems to be all members present now, Chair, thank you.
We're a full committee, jolly good. So we'll move over to the agenda. First item, apologies and deputy members. You've already said councillor Clea is not here, and we've got councillor Bentote. And I believe everybody else is here, is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, yes, just confirmed that is the case.
Disclosures of interest? I did send in a disclosure of interest, I don't know whether you picked it up. If not, shall I repeat what it is?
Yes, please, Chair. I think under the new arrangements, we do ask for members to state those to the meeting.
Okay. My interest is on Item 13, which is the battery storage in Wickham. I am obviously ward member for Southwick and Wickham, and a member of Wickham Parish Council, who have referred this item to committee. I do not attend the planning committee of the parish council, and I have had nothing to do with the objection. And so it is a non-prejudicial interest. Is mine the only interest today?
No, Chairman, if you're declaring you're a district councillor, so am I for the item on Demmead, which I can't remember the number off the top of my head.
It's Item 11 on the agenda. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair, for those.
Okay, so then we, I don't believe, have any subcommittees to set up?
That is correct.
And then we have two sets of minutes. So if I take them by, in turn, and if you could perhaps just unmute your microphones and say agreed, or if anyone's got any query on the minutes, then please indicate that now. So the first one, first set of minutes in our agenda pack is the 23rd of June.
Agreed.
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 So those are agreed, thank you. And the second?
Agreed. Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. And then the second set of minutes is the 16th of July.
Agreed.
Are those agreed?
Agreed.
And, thank you, so those are agreed. Then the next item on the agenda is to accept the update sheet, which was circulated yesterday.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. So we turn now then to the main items on the list. The first one, agenda item 7, is SPNP/20/00708/4. It's part retrospective erection of a private recreational stable to be used in association with Hayden Barn Cottage. The case officer is Hannah Harrison, and I'm going to pass over to Hannah for her presentation. Over to you, Hannah.
Thank you, Chair. Today I present to you the case for Hayden Barn Cottage. It's an erection of a private recreational stable used in association with the main dwelling at Hayden Barn. Here I'm showing you the location plan and land ownership. The stables currently are located within the red outlined area. I will now show you various photos of the site. These were taken at the beginning of the year, so visibility is a lot higher in its current location. There is a table to the bottom right hand of your screens, so you can see where each location was taken. So this view is showing you from the main road and Hayden Barn Lane. Next photograph, again, still on Hayden Barn Lane, but you can see where the current location of the stables are. Again, visibility was quite clear at the beginning of the year. This photograph was taken from the front of the neighbour's house, the Hayloft. Again, you can see the stables from the road here. Next photograph, a bit further up the road from the neighbour, but still looking into the grounds, not visible from this location. This photo was taken on the public right of way, just to the west of the location. You can see it slightly, but again, this was taken at the beginning of the year. This photograph is from the woodland, which is east of the location. This is in the ownership of the applicant, but as you can see, the stables are not visible from this point. This is showing a view into the paddock from the woodland. This is also the track that's currently put in place to access to the stables. It is proposed to resurface the track, to cede it, and to also make it form a generic farm track. There is a photo in the top right corner that gives you an example of how we're looking to have it. This photograph is in the furthest point. This is the corner that we are looking to relocate the stables. Visually, you can see the contours of the land, obviously steeping to the east. This photograph is taken from within the neighbour's swimming area. As you can see, currently the stables are quite visible. The yellow line that you can see across the photograph was the original, well, is the current hedge line, which was actually cut down by the overhead maintenance people. Again, another photograph from the neighbour's garden, again, quite visible, and you can also see the yellow line of where the hedge was cut down again. This photograph is taken, again, within the neighbour's land, but on the other side of the boundary. So from here, you can see that we will be looking to position the stables within this far right corner. But as you can see, it's in its current location, it is quite visible currently. These are the plans of the existing stables. The size and visual impact will not change. We have conditions in place to ensure that the colour and roof material will change to ensure that it's within the landscape. Again, these photographs were taken at the beginning of the year. So this was the current situation when I visited. The landscape around the stables at that present time was quite high, and you can see a drop round the side and to the back of the stables. When visiting with the committee members about a month ago, this wasn't visible due to vegetation, obviously overgrown, and the grass had grown as well, so you couldn't see that at the time. After the site visit with the committee members, we requested a landscape levels plan from the agent. They've submitted the following. These are showing the existing landscape levels as this paddock stands. So the top contour that you can see, section BB, that is the section within the area that we are looking to relocate the stables. And the section underneath is showing you the contour of the land as it currently stands where the stables are. These are the proposed landscape levels that will be impacted. So again, at the bottom, you can see the existing line of where it sits. And then circled in yellow above there is what we are looking to be proposing once we relocate it in the top north corner. Again, you can also see a proposed site plan in the top left hand of your screen to give you an idea. The track will be formed round to the top corner, where we're relocating the stables. But again, we were looking to make this to look like a farm track and not a road, as it's been proposed to look like. And these are some shots of the stables as they currently are. As I've explained, the conditions placed on the application will ensure that the stables are stained to a dark colour, and the roof material will be changed to ensure that it's set within the landscape. And this is the proposed block plan, just to give an indication of where we're relocating.
Thank you, Hannah. And I forgot to say, but Hannah did imply in her presentation, this was the subject of a site visit. And all members, except for councillor Bentote, who didn't know he was going to be deputy at that time, all members have visited the site and spent some time there. So we have several public speakers, and I know you're all here. So we'll start with the objector, Jackie Ware. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. And when you're ready, you have?
I just wanted to say thank you before I started for taking the time for the site visit, and I hope it was useful to you. And obviously, thank you for letting me speak again today.
Hello, that's a pleasure. So when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you.
Can you see the clock?
I can't, but if you tell me when to stop. Can I start again now, because I wasn't ready?
Yeah. Okay, so could we restart the clock, Dave?
Yes, when you are ready, Jackie, we will start.
I'm ready now, thank you. We believe the applicant has slapped the rules to their own advantage on many occasions. We feel they have little respect for us, their neighbours, the conservation of the South Downs National Park, or the planning team and councillors. In the last meeting, Dan Roycroft suggested that we were unwilling to speak to the applicants to discuss matters. This is not the case. We had several conversations and meetings with them, for which we have documented evidence, and we'd like to address this in questions after. The most recent contact was made by us following the last hearing, and the sole response from the applicant was to report our Avery to enforcement, saying it had been built without consent and should be removed. It seems their motivation is more to punish us for objecting to their works than the physical need for this particular location. We strongly believe this will have an adverse effect on our amenities and a devastating effect on our conservation work. The planning officer does not believe this will affect the owls. Surely, the advice of Kim Boog, a professional expert, is more relevant. Kim has made it clear, if the stables are approved, she will have to try and rehome the owls, a formidable task. This will be an end to our project. The grazing of horses in the field is not a problem, but the stables on the boundary are. Noise and light will be constant. Stabled horses need attending to at least twice daily. In winter months, lighting will be essential. Whatever steps planned, put in place to limit lighting vehicles, it will be impossible to police. To date, the use of the unauthorised road feels constant. It is a convenient parking spot for the vehicles owned by the applicant and visitors to Hayden Barn Cottage. It pushes the problem as far away as possible from their property towards ours. The planning officer makes mention to the current location of the stables, stating the new location is much better. Please remember, the current location was never approved, so anything could be considered an improvement. The only comparison that should be made is against what is there now and both Pauline Millington's reports and photograph evidence. As you have seen, they have raised the land across the meadow to unacceptable levels. This is without planning consent, which is undoubtedly required. Why should they be allowed to flout the rules? And why hasn't this been addressed? The planning statement says for the second time they don't know if this was always the case, despite us proving written evidence. In places, the ground has been raised by up to five feet, as you would have noticed yourselves during the visit. Whatever the outcomes of the stables, this separate issue must be addressed, as it causes concern for flooding. Our numerous requests for an ecological visit have been denied, and we are simply referred to the irrelevant report submitted by David Watts Ecology, despite the fact we have reported potential sighting of hazel dormouse. To conclude, we would once again urge you, in fact beg you, to consider our plea to turn down the application with a view to it being reapplied for away from our boundary. I trust you acknowledge that our objection is in no way spiteful to the applicant or for our own selfish means, it's solely for conservation purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Members, do you have any questions for Ms Ware?
We have councillor Leaming, Chair, with a question, thank you.
Councillor Leaming?
Thank you. With the Avery where we're proposing to put it near, would vermin have an adverse effect on the owls within the Avery?
The vermin wouldn't have an effect, because they wouldn't be very likely to get into the Avery. And if they did get into the Avery, the owls would probably quite like it, because they eat vermin. The vermin isn't an issue at all. Unless they're poisoned, of course, yes. My husband just said if the vermin were poisoned, that would obviously cause an issue. But it's not that, it's the noise, it's the human intervention, comings and goings. I mean, there's comings and goings already up and down this road with vehicles. And if the road is made even further across, behind where the owls are, there's no way that it can be policed. Even if there's not allowed any lights, you won't be able to stop car lights and people coming and going with torches all times of day and night. So that's the reason that we wouldn't be allowed to keep the owls there.
Are you saying then that you're getting more than traffic in the early in the morning and late at night?
At the moment, the roadway which the applicant has built without planning permission, which you've seen from the photographs, was never there, despite the fact that they say it was. And we've reported it to enforcement on many occasions. I've got emails after email with enforcement and planning saying that the road was always there, it wasn't. And as you can see from the photographs that Hannah presented, the applicants use it to park vehicles, and it's basically a service road for them now, because their driveway isn't big enough for two families with their horse boxes and everything. So there's constant use of the road.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see councillor Reed, you've got your hand up. Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chair. I don't appear to have a chat facility, it goes to post for some reason, so I'm going to have to use the hand signals. Could I just ask, when it rains and rains heavily, are there any water problems coming towards your property?
Yes, there are. Obviously, they've raised the land. We believe that anything more than 300 millimetres needs planning consent. When they rebuilt, they made Hayden Barn Cottage, the main residence, 48% bigger a couple of years ago. And we had no objection to that whatsoever, it's fine. But we didn't realise they were going to use all of the chalk spoil that they removed from the property to disperse across most of the meadowland, because they obviously didn't want to play for landfill. So it now has a unnatural height, and with the tarmac road as well, and the five foot drop-off that they've made along our hedgerow, which wasn't there previously. We can see a lot of water running down. In fact, last night, when we had the big storms and things and heavy rain, it just runs directly down from their stable block onto our vegetable patch.
Thank you.
First chair, any further questions?
Yes, we have councillor McLean with a question, Chair, thank you.
Councillor McLean?
Yes, good morning, Chair, good morning. You mentioned, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah. You mentioned vehicle movements on what we're saying is a newly made road. Do you have any idea of, or can you prove, or any evidence of the number of vehicles actually using that road?
I have got photographic evidence. Obviously, I haven't done a log as such, because it's constant. But if you have a look at the photographs that Hannah put on her presentation, you can see the type of vehicles that they're, you know, there's a horse box, Range Rovers, vans, all sorts. And you can clearly see the horse box parked there.
And a second question, if I may. Are they going to the house, or are they going to the stables?
The stables are not allowed to be used, because they don't have planning. They were built, obviously, without planning. So they're not allowed to use them. So what they do is, you've been to the house, you can see there's a walkway through to their garden from just above the stables. So they like to park just outside of the walkway and walk through, because their driveway is relatively small, bearing in mind that they have a horse box, two Range Rovers, two other cars, and, you know, people coming to do maintenance and building most days.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. First chair, is that it for members' questions?
Yes, Chair, no more questions, thank you.
I have a question, Ms Ware, if I may. Concerning the Avery.
Yes.
This is not, these owls, or you've got owls in there at the moment.
Yes.
They're not permanent, are they? The aim is to release them eventually?
That's correct, yes. But we obviously are working with the Birds That Pray Hospital, and we're in the hope that we can, you know, take on more injured birds.
Yes, so once they go, you'll have a, we'll hopefully have a constant.
We're due to have next week, it's a, I'm just going to ask my husband, because he knows what he does, a barn owl which has cataracts. So we're hoping to have that. So, you know, it is a constant, hopefully, flow of animals. And the reason we find it upsetting is because there's far better places for them to sight the stables. And we've been doing this for, you know, we've been here for over 15 years. It's just really unfair that we should stop doing what we do. And I know that you've had letters come in from other residents. We have children from the local schools and things coming to do surveys and look at the animals. And it just seems really unfair that this is sort of stopped just because they want the stables in that particular place. I mean, last time, when you asked why they didn't want to put the stables in the wooded area, one of the reasons given was that they didn't like it, because it was too dark. Before they moved to, next door to us, they had a stud farm with 26 horse boxes. many of which were located inside American barn. And if you, I don't know if you know what that means, but it's basically stables inside a shed. So they're accustomed to having horses without any natural daylight, which so it's, to me, that was just a nonsense.
And I have to ask you this, is there anywhere else on your property that you could re-site this wild bird Avery?
No, there isn't. And I think my husband discussed that with people when they came around. It's the only place that we have with sort of a natural tree growing, although there's lots of trees around, they're not on our boundary. And it is the only place. And saying that, you know, we spent many, several thousands of pounds on building it. And if we were to sort of build another one, you know, we're going to, what do we do with the owls in the meantime? And it's just, it just seems ridiculous when they could easily have the stable somewhere more suitable.
Thank you very much. I think that's it for questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Vice Chair, is that it for questions?
Yes, Chair, no more questions.
So thank you very much. Thank you for today, obviously. If you could just turn your microphone.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next public speaker is councillor Rogers, the parish council, local parish council representative. Good morning.
Good morning to you, good morning to everybody. Chair, thank you very, shall I start? Thank you, sorry. Chair and members of the planning committee, thank you all for the opportunity to address the committee today for the second time. My name is Mark Rogers and I am addressing you as a chairman of Warford Parish meeting, in which the applicant's houses locate, but not the paddock where the stable is. Our adjoining parish West Meon are fully aware of this application and like our subject, they can't be here today, but you should have read the email they sent yesterday and it's in the papers. We still have concerns about the application and the revised recommendations made. We agree with Hugh's point, which you'll hear later, that the report is focusing a lot on the comparison with the existing unauthorised building and track, which is irrelevant as neither of these are authorised. The letter and supporting photo from the original resident dated August 17th, again in your papers, brought home the extent of the groundwork already undertaken. Therefore, the comparison should be with the land before any works were carried out. This can now be clearly seen. You've also seen within your correspondence that not one of the people took the time to comment on our portal or on your portal supported the application and the overall number of objections has increased to 20. Our own planning procedure within our parish requests residents either make direct comments to you or suggest I comment on their behalf, as I'm doing now. So the number would be much higher. This is confirmed by the communication from the Thomas Lord, published on August 14th, that makes mention of the underlying bad feeling this application has generated. We again confirm that the wares of parish are not against a stable being built within the confines of the property. However, there are a number of serious concerns which have not been met by proposed conditions and so we will object to the application. Firstly, the location, as we mentioned, we still cannot understand why the proposed stable sits closer to the neighbour's property than the applicant, at the furthest point from the entrance. Secondly, in putting up the stable in its current location, the applicant has already damaged a large area of meadow. The proposed location would involve damaging more. Signs that the stable building currently has no facilities for horse tack, saddles and fodder, and yet they could be, they could hold three horses. Our concern is still this will be later, a later application for further buildings. Furthermore, this field falls below the British Horse Society's recommended size for two, let alone three horses. Failure is to seek planning commission for groundwork. A stableless location is only practical because of the extensive groundwork created, the track and hard standing that was done in 2019. We don't think there is any doubt that this should have been subject to a planning commission and wasn't. While this plan has not addressed this point, possible solutions include the application being suspended until approval of the ground has been applied for and given. Power line, the fact that the proposed location is extremely near a power line has not, has been raised before, but I see no sign that's been addressed. If not SEC be consulted, as we understand, the object is, they object to anything closer than six metres, six metres, which is way maybe the case here. In conclusion, the pass of Warford and West Meon still object to this application and we suggest that great weight should be given to conserving the landscape and the scenic beauty of our national park when reinstating the damage already done. And I also consider words of the Barn Owl Project, published on 18th, conservation and preservation are not being considered at all. Furthermore, I kindly remind the committee of the overwhelming objections to the application, including the proximity of the Avery used for the Barn Owl rescue. Thank you very much for your time. I'm so sorry, I cut it short there. It's very long, I expected, I do apologise. Yeah.
So councillors, any questions for councillor Rogers?
Thank you very much for your time.
Just a minute because it takes a while for people to put their register that they want to speak and then for the vice chair to tell me that they want to speak. This is sort of slowness of virtual meetings. Vice Chair, any councillors wanting to speak? Can't hear from the vice chair. I might just go into chat.
I've put a request in, Chair, if I may.
Oh, right, thank you. And councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Mr Just. There seems to be, and I don't know, I'll be put right by Mrs Pinnock if my question is a little inconsiderate, but there seems to be a huge feeling in the area against this barn project or stables. And I wonder, could we be advised as to why this is causing such huge strength of feeling in the locality from people who live, by the look of it, some distance away from this proposed stable? That's my first question. Thank you very much.
May I answer? Councillor McLean, thank you. Councillor McLean, the issue seems to be, and it reads also the communication you can see within the documents, that the fact that this was done without any planning application and done really without any consideration for the rules and regulations for a residently new member to our parish. I think if you look at everything, and I've tried to dismiss the real people just moaning and groaning for the sake of it, which you always find in parishes and all are so very familiar with that. But the general consensus is that why has it been done? Why can this be done to, and I have been a visitor to the property and looked at what it's done to the residents of the property and it's quite appalling. And I think that is the underlying issue, is the, this has been done without consideration for the public, right? Out of consideration for the views, out of consideration for the regular planning consents. And it's almost pretty crudely, it almost says, why bother? And if this happens, so many others think they can do the same thing without due consent. I hope to answer the question. I'm sorry, it wasn't very clear.
No, thank you very much. That's clarified my thinking on the subject. Thank you.
Vice Chair, any other members?
Uh, no more members' questions, Chair. Sorry, I just dropped out for a moment, but I don't think I missed anything unduly important. Thank you.
So no more, no more questions. You can't catch that, sorry.
Sorry, no more questions from members, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, councillor Rogers, for coming along today. The next public speaker is the, if you could, yes, lovely. The next public speaker is Ward councillor, councillor Hugh Lumby. And you have five minutes when you're ready.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just preparing myself and making sure I don't send any inadvertent invitations out before I start. Okay, thank you. I've managed to get it on my screen now. Thank you, Chair, and thank you again for the opportunity to address the committee today. Apologies again for the confusion on the meeting invite last week. Thank you also for everyone for visiting the site last month. I hope you found it useful, noting in particular the stunning beauty of this location, the height of the applicant's site above neighbouring property, the telegraph wire crossing the site in the corner, the proximity of the Avery to the boundary, and maybe you even saw some of the wonderful hours, nodding stagey like the chair, and of course, the suitable location in the wood at the top of the field. I have to say, I have major issues with the report here and the conclusions reached. I will touch on some of these shortly and indeed, you would have read about some of the concerns from the current pollings received, which can be placed on the website. I note here in particular recent emails from Claire Joyce from a nearby pub, Kim Boog from the Addle Hospital, the former owner of the applicant's site, Pauline Millington, neighbours Hazel Taylor and Alice Blini, as well as the letter that came in yesterday from West Meon Parish, the site straddled the boundary between Warford and West Meon parishes. If you haven't seen those, please do take the time to have a read. The report, and actually the presentation on the report, seems to focus a lot on the comparison with the existing unauthorised building and track. For example, on page 31, when considering the impact on residential amenity. Likewise, almost most of the photographs that we saw were again focusing on that existing building. This is irrelevant as neither this track or building are authorised. The comparison should be with the land before any works were carried out, i.e. open land. And in making that comparison, it should be on the basis of the correct heights. It would appear the applicants raised the height of the site by using it as dumping ground for chalk and earth as part of their early extension to Hayden Barn Cottage. Former owner Pauline Millington refers to how they used to be able to talk over the hedge. You will have seen the huge height difference there today. The increase is clearly substantial, but I think ignored in the report. Chair, I know that members of the committee are for detail about the previous ground raising and I also asked the planning team about the consents for this and enforcement. The response was that this was addressed in the report, but I don't think that that is adequate. Similarly, we saw the plans in the presentation that just showed the landscape as it is, not as it was originally. So in addition to refusing this consent, I would ask that the committee also note its desire that any unauthorised work should be investigated and appropriate enforcement proceedings taken. That is only appropriate given the approach taken by the applicants on the Avery. No mention is also made of the fact the field falls below the British Horse Society recommended size for two, let alone three horses. Why are three stables required for one horse? I'm also concerned at the interpretation reached on the national park policies. I only have time for one example, equestrian uses SD24. This is reviewed on pages 18 through to 30 and spends much time irrelevantly comparing the proposal with the existing unauthorised building. It ignores at least four crucial paragraphs. Paragraph A, which requires that any development is of a scale and/or an intensity of equestrian use compatible with the landscape and the special qualities. As we know, the field can only take one horse, so it's clearly of an incompatible level of intensity. Paragraph D, it should locate new buildings, stables, yard areas, facilities adjacent to existing buildings, provided they respect the amenities and activities of surrounding properties and uses. It's hard to think of a location further away from the existing buildings. It clearly doesn't respect the neighbouring properties or its amenity, as seems to be intended to drive the owls out. E, buildings should be well located to existing utilities and transport infrastructure, including vehicular and field accesses, tracks and bridleways. You will have seen a good location in the woods right beside the road with a borehole and an existing track, without the need to desecrate open land with new tracks. My understanding is that it is too dark, it's not too dark, in any event, provides easy access to the field. Finally, look at paragraph G. That says it should demonstrate a conservation-based land management approach. Given the destruction and the effect on the owls, I think enough said. We have two parishes opposed to this, as well as neighbours and the former owner. We have evidence from owl experts in relation to the landscape change. It's clear it's against policies. So I don't understand why the policy, why the report reaches recommendations and I do urge that this is rejected and the applicants are encouraged to reapply for a better location. And in rejecting it, please let's send a message that both ourselves and the SDMP are determined to protect the national park and its residents, both human and natural, that it is not acceptable to ignore requests and to raise land and expect to get away with it and that trying to get consent by doing something unauthorised and then offering something, excuse me, slightly less bad instead will not work. Thank you for your time today. Do put people, nature's first. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair, any questions for councillor Lumby?
No questions, Chair, thank you.
Apologies for my beeper. I'd set my own alarm because I couldn't see.
Well, that's very helpful.
Time for a screen.
I thought, oh, they've increased the sound. So we'll just wait a second because it's a slightly slower process. Yeah, there are no more questions for you. So thank you very much for your contributions today.
Sorry, Chair, councillor McLean has just slipped in with a question.
Okay, yeah, good. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Lumby, I think, again, supporting what was said by your parish council chairman a minute ago. This is more an issue of work going ahead without planning permission and flouting of the law and legislation, rather than the building of a stable where it is. Am I correct in that or can you put me right?
I think it's both, actually. I think that the, there's clearly a lot of upset about the fact that that so much has been done with effectively apparent disregard to the rules. As I understand it, the applicants have been involved in property development previously, so they do understand about planning rules and they have planning advisors. So quite why they chose disregard it in this way, I don't really understand. There was then the second point that they agreed to move it to somewhere more appropriate, which was the top of the field, up in the woods. And having agreed to do so, seemed to have then gone back on that one. And I don't quite know what the motivation was for that, whether they put it in this corner simply out of spite or whether there's a good reason why they want to do this one. Maybe that it's a question of cost and expense, having spent all this money raising the height of the field, putting in the road to move it, it's pretty expensive. A simple move down the way is a lot easier than the taking everything up and putting it back in the woods. So I wonder whether that is the motivation. But actually, on policy, I don't think that anybody objects to this field being used for horses or that there being stables in the area. But actually, it's been put as far away from their own property as it can possibly get, as near to the neighbouring property as it can possibly get. By looking to effectively reject the owls and seek to have those removed, there's clearly, you know, quite what the motivation is from doing that. It clearly isn't reflecting policy. And I do think that actually, when we look at the actual local plan policies, there are good reasons why this should not be put in this location and why there are better places that absolutely accord with SD24. Because up in the woods, there's already a track there, there's no destruction of the national park, no damage to views. There is effectively a water supply already there and all those other things are provided for. And it's not right up against the neighbouring property. So I think it isn't just about the fact that everybody is upset that these people went ahead and did works without approval. But actually, the location is, I think, objectionable and I think that is why, my part, I would encourage them to reapply for a better location and for the committee to reject this location. Did I answer a question? Sorry.
Thank you, Hugh. Yes, you did.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think that might be it, but councillor...
No, we have councillor Leaming chair with a question, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lumby, have you spoken to the previous residents about the trackway that's got access to the back of their property, of that property now? How new is that road, do you believe?
I believe that the road through the woods was put there by the previous owners. I've not spoken to them directly. I've seen correspondence on it and I've seen, and I've emailed them, I've emailed correspondence with them, sorry. So they did put the track through the wood, but not out into the field. The extension through the field was put in by the applicants, by the current owners, as part of building the stable in its current unauthorised location at the bottom. They, I think, similarly had permission for the borehole, so the previous owners have got the mission and got the borehole put in. So what we saw in the wood, and I think Hannah put a picture up showing the track through the wood, which I don't know whether you saw, saw when you did the site visit, there's a gate onto the main road and it leads directly into that track. That was there by the previous owners.
Yeah, we did actually walk along that particular path.
Oh, yeah. It's nice, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. It's nice.
We do have the agent next, so perhaps you wanted to ask matters of fact with the agent.
I was going to, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Rutter, any further questions?
No further questions, Chair, thank you.
So thank you very much, councillor Lumby, for...
Thank you, Chair.
Today and do as you wish, stay as long as you want. And finally, the last public speaker is the agent, Mr Dan Roycroft. Good morning, Mr Roycroft. Good morning.
Good morning, councillors.
When you're ready, you have three minutes.
Okay. I'm not going to take up the whole three minutes, I don't think. It's just a few brief points and bits of clarifications. After the last meeting, the main, the main point that you wanted to clarify was the level changes. Since then, our client has had a top graphic survey completed that shows the levels exactly as they are at the moment, together with the set of section drawings as existing and as proposed, as shown here. You can see from those that... You can see from those that there is a slight drop behind the stables. That broadly is where the stables has been sat on a level platform, rather than going with the gradient just to make it so it's flat. You can also see from the proposed section drawing that that base is proposed to be broken up, moved away, and that level returns to the, the kind of gradient of the land that's there on the rest of the section. So that will be put back as it is. In terms of the amount of hard standing and parking of vehicles, we don't dispute at all at the moment that what is there currently actually is inappropriate. You'll see from the proposed drawing that is on the proposed site plan and it's on the, the section drawing, that that level of hard standing is proposed to be significantly reduced into just a single width track with a grass central reserve with permeable material either side of that. So that, that kind of impermeable hard standing and large parking court type area in front of the stable is proposed to be removed, a much smaller area in front of the new sighting is now proposed. I need to address the point that so much of the objection is being placed on the fact that this was done without consent. Again, that's not something that's disputed. And our client isn't disputing that they didn't need consent. What they're doing is they are now proposing to put that situation right with a part retrospective planning application and with new proposals which have been discussed and agreed with officers. The new sighting is in no way to spite neighbours. That was something that was agreed on site with the council's professional consultees as likely to be the most appropriate sighting for the stables, and that is why it has been placed there. It has nothing to do with an impact on neighbours. Whilst we're on the subject of neighbours and the need for planning permission, it is worth letting councillors know that planning enforcement have, since the last committee, confirmed that the Avery does not meet the guidance of permitted development and therefore would require planning permission. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think you'll understand that we've all been on site, so that might have raised more questions than we asked before. So Vice Chair, who would like to ask questions? Oh, I've already got councillor Reed.
Councillor Reed, yes, that's the only one I have at the moment, Chair, thank you.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Mr O'Callaghan. Just two things, if I may. Did you explore any other locations before settling on the application site that you chosen? And the second one, runoff. We've heard from the neighbouring property that there is a considerable runoff. And where you've cited the stables will collect the water. Did that go through your mind when planning this particular application?
Thanks, councillor Reed. Yes, it did. So I mean, in terms of runoff from the stable, from the field, obviously the field is, is permeable. So any runoff is going to be greenfield rate, so I don't particularly have a, see there could be an issue with that. In terms of the stables, this is a question that was raised by officers as well for drainage and is contained within the, in the report. And the applicant is proposing a soakaway in the field. So all the, all the surface water runoff from the stable and hard standing related to it would, would drain to a, to a soakaway in the field.
Chairman, can I have just a supplementary, if I may?
Of course.
The soil, oh, the subsoil in that particular part of the land.
What is the subsoil?
Yes.
Well, the, the objector when they've told you about what was spread on the land has said it's chalk, so it's permeable.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any more questions?
We have two more questions, Chair, from councillor McLean and councillor Laming. Thank you.
Councillor McLean, first.
Thank you, Chair. A question, if I may, on, you mentioned your, a professional advisor suggested that that was the best location for the stable. I wonder, could you tell us who the advisor was?
Yes, yeah, not, not my advisor, councillor McLean, your consultant, so we.
I don't mind. Could you just tell me who it was?
Yeah, so it was, so it was the case officer and your principal landscape officer.
So they decided that that was the best location for the stable?
We discussed, we met them on site to discuss the, the previous application, where it was thought that the existing sighting was inappropriate. We discussed where it could be moved to that would be a much more appropriate sighting that with, with the landscape mitigation we're proposing as well, in terms of the soft landscaping, additional hedging around the stables. And that was the sighting that was agreed would likely not result in an inappropriate landscape impact, yeah.
And a secondary question, if I may, on the same one. Was also the area around the woodland discussed with the case officer and the woodland officer you mentioned?
The woodland was.
Up by the road.
Yeah, the woodland was briefly discussed. Our clients, their preference was not to put it there, as has been discussed in terms of that natural daylight, leaf litter from the trees, general impact of, of putting buildings in, in areas of woodland. And for those reasons, given that the other location was also considered appropriate, that, that was our, our client's preference and wasn't, wasn't something that was raised objection by officers.
I'll take that up with the case officer later. And the final one is, you mentioned greenfield rain. It's an expression I've never heard before. What's different between greenfield rain and ordinary rain?
Sorry, councillor, that, that was probably how I've misspoken. I, I meant to say a greenfield rate, so it'd be a greenfield runoff rate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and councillor Laming.
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions. When you refer to the fact that you'll return the ground back to its levels, does that mean back to the pre-levels when it was originally, before the spoil was put on the top? And the second thing is that does concern me even more is that horses produce urine and manure. How are you going to deal with that and make sure that it doesn't affect the neighbours with the smell, et cetera? Which is quite an important thing from that point of view.
Sure. In terms, in terms of the levels, I can't say it can be returned to a, to a, if, if there is a difference, I can't say it can be returned to the level pre our client's ownership of the land, because we simply don't know what that is. And as far as I can see, when I stand there, and I don't know if councillors felt the same, but there is a natural slope to the land across it, the section drawings and the top graphic survey show that. So in terms of what I'm saying, return it to its level, to its natural level, it's, it's taking out bits where the stable has been created on a, on a level platform. And there may be some cut for the existing hard standing, which is quite large. It would be to return it so the natural slope of the land continues across those areas. Your second question, I believe that, I agree with you, it's an important point. There is a planning condition, condition nine, which, which covers that point where we need to submit details of where horse manure, stable waste and means of disposal for, for the agreement of the LPA prior to, within three months of, of the planning commission being implemented.
Yeah, but normally you have some manure pile near the stables, which effectively in this case means that it's going to be next to, next door property. And you know full well how much soil has been banked up there because you can see the pre-existing level. If you dig down, you'll see where the turf is, where it was before. So I think we need to sort of think quite hard about that point.
That wasn't a question, was it, councillor Laming? No. So I, I do have some questions. Mr Roycroft, could I just ask about consultations? So I understand that you had consultations as to the most appropriate site with the case officer. Did you have any consultation with the neighbour as it's on the border of their property?
I, I haven't personally, Chair. And, and I appreciate that the applicant has disputed what we said last time. I can only report what I have been told by my client. So I, I can't, I can't answer it as exact fact because I, I wasn't there.
And what, what have you been told by your client?
All I've been told is that the applicant's daughter, who is kind of in her thirties, went next door to discuss with them and was told that they didn't want to talk to her about it. And that, that's, that's the extent of what I've been told, that they tried and, and they weren't willing to engage. That might, may or may not be true, I don't know, I'm not saying either way, but that's what I've been told.
Okay. Could I just refer to horse boxes? So the horse boxes will come up the track and they won't go up as far as the stables presumably. Or how many horse boxes would you envisage being on the site at one time?
I wouldn't envisage there being many because the, the stables is, only holds, only holds three horses. I believe they have kind of a horse, it's almost like a lorry, that I think probably has the three in. I don't believe it's my client's intention for that to be parked on the paddock permanently at all, other than when the horses might be transported. And if, if that gives some comfort to neighbours and councillors, we'd be happy for a condition to be added to the consent that says there can't be any kind of parking of vehicles there other than when the horses are being, actually being used to access the stables itself.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Vice Chair, any further questions?
No further questions, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr Roycroft, for coming along. And if you could just mute your microphone and turn off your video, great. So Hannah, anything you'd like to comment on in, oh, we've got, before we do that, we've got councillor Reed. Sorry, I didn't see your little yellow hand. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. You're actually moving into an area where I was trying to get first question in. So if you could go back to the officer and if I can follow the officer, I'd be grateful.
This is for Mr Roycroft, is it, this question?
No, no, it's for the officer.
All right, so we'll come to that in a minute. We'll come to questions for office two, Hannah. So I just wanted Hannah to comment on whether she wanted to update us on anything that she's heard from the public speaking. Hannah?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have anything more to update. I think everyone has obviously clarified all of their points of the application. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Chairman, with your permission, I suppose I would just like to remind members, and I know you know this, that, you know, everything we've heard about, you know, the other, the, the, sort of the neighbour issues aren't material planning considerations and we must focus our mind on land use planning matters. And I think, I know we've heard a lot and it was good to hear that, but actually, in our determination, we need to just focus on those planning matters, Chair.
Thank you, Julie, and nor are the enforcement issues on a neighbouring property. I don't know if anything can be done about this, but what we're looking at is, well, certainly on my iPad, I'm looking at half of Julie and an arm of Hannah's. Is there any adjustment we can make to the camera to be able to see Hannah? Because she's going to be speaking a lot.
Chair, I can try to adjust the camera if you wish and try to bring it round a little bit more for you.
Yes, please.
Chair, can I ask a question on this? We normally, we seem to have up to nine, I think on this Teams setup, we have nine possible images. We seem to be today between flitting between two and four. What's happened to the other five?
Well, I can see nine, but Dave, do you want to comment?
I think a lot of it, Chair, is determined on which device you're actually looking up for it. Usually they're active when the microphone is worked. And I think Microsoft Teams is now at least nine and can be up to more multiple participants.
Can't, can't say any further than that.
No, I can't, I can't really add anything to that, Chair, now.
But that's great.
Can you see Hannah now quite clearly?
We can see Hannah, that's great.
That's fine.
If we need to see Julie, we'll just listen to her perhaps. So moving to the, it's got a new title, the planning assessment on page twenty seven. Any questions on the background, which goes on for some number of pages? It goes on to page thirty. So any questions on that?
Chair, I have indication of two questions, but I'm not sure particular, what particular areas they're on. But as there are only two, perhaps I could just say you've got councillor Reed and councillor McLean as well. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just to answer councillor McLean, I've got nine images on my particular screen. The first one is of a legal nature. Lots has been made with regard to the track. The planning proposal description does not mention the track at all. If by giving planning permission for the proposal before us today, does that automatically legalize the track?
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, we, we tried to narrow down the proposals to as one line as possible because we do get applications that have paragraphs and paragraphs of everything that they're trying to do. I think if you read the design and access statement within the application, I think it's clear exactly what this applicant is trying to get approval for. It's obviously not just the stables, it's also the access to the stables and the use of the land and how they propose to maintain it. That's all I can say on that matter.
So the answer is yes?
In the nicest way, yes.
Thank you.
And I have an associated question to that in that I, I too have had concerns over the raising of the land. If we were to approve this application, that would then approve the levels as they are now. Is that correct?
Yes, Chair, that is correct. So the land as it stands would then be classed as approval land of landscape that has changed. Granted, it's not something that's ideal within the national park that we constantly approve. It's not something we would approve on a daily basis, obviously. But as we visited the site, you could see there was no material harm to the landscape. It wasn't as drastic as we probably thought it could have been. And from looking at the neighbour's side, as well as being within the paddock, you could see there was a natural contour to the landscape already.
So have you discussed this raising of the levels of the land, albeit from, you know, sort of a different project? Have you discussed that with the park, South Downs National Park?
Not directly personally, no, but I'm, I'm going off on my kind of advice and skills that I've learnt over the last however long I've been in this position.
Chairman, I appreciate you can't see me. What I'd say is the National Park have delegated the job of determining this planning application to us and your officers have made that assessment. We do have Katie Morgan's with us on Teams, who's the council's principal landscape architect. Now, she visited the site with Hannah in terms of, and I think it's probably one of the questions members may ask, in terms of looking at an appropriate sighting for this. And, you know, if members did have any questions on that, I'm sure Katie would be happy to respond to those. Now, your officers have made an assessment, we've put a formal recommendation to you. We've considered the sighting, the situation on site in terms of stables being relocated. We've also assessed the level of, of land that's proposed in this application. And we've, our, our recommendation to you is that we consider those acceptable in the landscape. And obviously, you've been to smart yourself and you'll make your own decision on that based on the relevant policies, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. But of course, councillors may ask questions on items of concern, which was, was and is a concern of mine. Katie, we'll come to you in a minute, if we may, if you have something to contribute to this discussion. But first of all, councillor McLean.
Thank you very much, Chairman. A couple of things sort of slightly concern me from the statements made by the applicant's representative. I don't know if you can see me okay or not. Firstly, you visited the site with the landscape officer and you were taken with the applicant and shown the current location, the preferred location, which slams up on the back of the neighbour's property. And you were also, it was suggested, looked at the, the position up by the woodland. Can I have your, and it was also said that the applicant did not want it near the woodland, was the words you. Can I have your, and it was also said that the applicant did not want it near the woodland, were the words used. So could you explain how more or a greater focus was placed on the woodland? So we could at least have had your arguments as to why that would be the right or wrong thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the woodlands were very much discussed when we went on site. But at the time of visiting with the landscape officer and the agent, we did look at a location, if you do recall, when we were on site, there was a kind of a green building that was within the woodland already. And I was informed that that was, that actually had some form of house amenities within there, so we couldn't touch it at all. Other than that, we couldn't look to locate it within the woodlands without removing any trees. And we wouldn't want to remove any trees, they were quite new, they were quite mature. But it was quite a well-grown woodland at the present time of the beginning of the year. I mean, now you have seen it, you can see it's very much in full bloom. So that was the indication that we couldn't touch the woodland. Obviously, it would have been an ideal location, but I was informed on site that it wouldn't be possible. So we then looked at the paddock, had a look at the contours of the land. The high point of that, the highest point of the paddock, as you may be aware, when we went to site, you can see the neighbours from the top of that paddock. So we then had to look at placing it along the line that it is already in and then pulling it along the boundary. I'm very aware that it's still within close boundary to the neighbour, but it's further away from their property. It currently is in a location that's not ideal for the neighbour. It's very intrusive, they can see it, as you can see from my site visit, location plans and photographs. So we're looking to put it away from the neighbour. I understand that it's still pulling it away from the main resident, but it's still within close proximity to still be looked after.
Sorry, if I can come in then. Okay, possibly we're saying we don't want to replace the green building that's in the woodland. If we just moved it forward and built it on the top edge of the field, the paddock, without affecting the woodland at all, it wouldn't increase the amount of area being used by the stables, because you'd just be putting it in a different place. That it would appear would be more, more acceptable to the neighbours and to the people who are objecting to the application. I wonder if you could come back on that. So not in the woodland, in front of it. Thank you.
Chairman, if I can come back on that, what we have to do is we have to determine the application in front of us. So we have to make a planning judgment on this, not what, you know, perhaps officers or members or the neighbours would prefer. So I think, you know, it's not really appropriate for us to comment on that. We did give some advice in terms of what we thought was suitable location. That's the application now in front of you and I think you just need to make a decision on this. So I don't think we can comment further on that one, Chair. Thank you.
Sorry, can I just, but if, if it is germane to the thinking of the members, which we're saying, which it is, we have to consider it, do we not? Whether it is a planning policy, but it's certainly, it is, it is the, the direction we're going to arrive at the decision, we have to discuss it, don't we?
No, this is the application in front of us, as you've just heard from the Service Leader for Environment. So this is what we're, we're considering, whether we think it's appropriate or not. And if we don't think it's appropriate, as recommended by the officers, then we have to have material planning reasons.
Thank you for your advice, Chair. I'll leave it there.
Yeah. Councillor Reed, I've got a, a yellow hand up on my screen. Do you want to ask another question?
It's rather good, that, isn't it, Chairman? Yeah, it's just a clarification, Chairman. When we were on site, and I think the site visit was extremely important to us, we were told that the green structure just inside the wooded area was in fact contained a water tank or of some description like that. However, when we opened it, it was a completely vacant area. Is that correct?
Chairman, that's what you members saw on site that day, but again, I just reiterate, that's not part of this application.
I understand that and I perfectly agree with you. But I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't remembering something that nobody else was. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
I suppose what, what the answer to that is, is that it might not at that time been anything in the green structure, but perhaps it has a need or a use at another time. So Vice Chair, any other questions?
No other chairs, no other, no other questions, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. So can we move on then to the levels, drainage and runoff and the impact on residential amenities, which takes us all the way to the end. Oh, and the impact on ecology, so rest of, the rest of the report. I've got a question while people are putting their, themselves forward on chat. And it's to do with the barn owl project. Now here what Julie Pennick says about it. But it says in the, certainly in the conclusion of our report, which is on page 32, that the development would not result in a detrimental impact on the loss of privacy and so on, and the wellbeing of the owls. And I wondered where that statement has come from, because that is not what we were being told by the objection letters and lately, the ones from the Barn Owl Project and Birds of Prey Hospital. So where would our assessment be that these birds of prey would not be affected? Hannah?
Thank you, Chair. I spoke to our ecologists within the council on the basis that obviously concerns were raised with the horses and owls being apparently close together. And she did come back to me and said they, they wouldn't refuse applications on this matter. In a natural environment, if stables were around, barn owls would still be around as well. So they would not refuse an application based on their close, close proximity to one another.
Okay, thank you. But I suppose the question I'm sort of asking is, might the Wild Bird Prey Hospital know better than our ecologist? Is that's not too rude a question?
Thank you, Chair. I, I wouldn't say it's a rude question at all, no. Obviously, the owl hospital do have their opinions and do have their preferences of where they would like their owl hospitals to be and what, how their locations would need to look like. I'm going on the advice of also our ecologists and obviously if they're not willing to refuse an application based on owls and horses alone, it would be very difficult to do that for this as well.
I understand. Thank you. Vice Chair, any further questions from councillors?
Just councillor Laming, Chair. Thank you.
Councillor Laming.
Yeah, thank you. Just to clarify one point in my mind. If we were minded to refuse this or accept it, and we're talking about returning the land to the levels, would that mean to the original level or to the level of the spoil that was there in the first place? Because when we were there, it had been built up considerably. If you look at the hedge line and the foundations of the hedge compared to where the back of the stables was. I just want to be clear in my own mind what happened at that point. And also what would happen to the track in the field if this was refused?
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, we have received the landscape level plans and they are within the presentation. We have what is there existing, which will be approved within this application because unfortunately we do not know what the levels were prior to the stables being built. The agent has also referenced this as well with, when he spoke a moment ago, that unfortunately we just don't know. So when we regard to the levels as they are, they are what they are now. And any land spoil will be dispersed across the paddock to ensure that the levels remain as they are now. Hopefully, that's answered your question.
No, not really, sorry. At the bottom, at the base of the hedge is the, the existing line of what the field contour was prior to the spoilage being put there. And it's easy then to backtrack that then up the field. Just if you had to remove the whole lot, that's really what I'm getting at.
Sorry, councillor, could you just clarify, are you concerned that the new location is going to spoil the land more? Or are you concerned with what's there currently?
All I'm concerned with is that the level of the land is such it's been raised up with the spoil, which, if I understand it correctly, they should have applied for permission for and haven't had it. So does that mean then that we got to return that to the level prior to the spoilage going down? That's...
Chairman, if I can help you, I think the plans that we've secured since she visited the site, that are in your papers on page 54 and 55, show the proposals and they show the existing levels with the spoil that's been deposited. And it also shows a section showing how that would be dispersed to create more of a gentle contour. And were you minded to approve this application? That would be what you'd be granting planning permission for. It would be that sort of levelling out rather than the slightly irregular rise in levels that you have from where the stable, where the, where the hedgerow is, where the stables are rising up. There'd be more of a contour there. And that would be what you'd be granting planning permission for i- if you're minded to approve it today.
I'm only worried that when we looked at the site as it's been built at the moment, the bank behind the stables was quite steep compared to what we've seen on the plans. And I'm just wondering how this has affected on the new one. I've looked, I've looked at the levels, but they don't seem to sort of make much, too much of a sense to me because the rake of the field, the slide of the field is, seems to be more when we visited it than what's shown on there. That's really my question.
Thank you, Chair. I think what they show at the rear of the existing and proposed stables is a levelling off there behind, and that's what you'd be granting permission for today if you were minded to approve it.
I think councillor, what you see in front of you is what is recommended for approval.
Yeah, thank you.
Chair, we have councillor McLean with a question now. Thank you.
Before I do that, I don't know whether Katie, you wanted to add anything to the questions that you've heard?
Oh, hi. Good morning, good morning, Chair. I don't have any, any sort of other questions to add, other than just, I think, to, to clarify the query of how the land would be reinstated in the existing, where the existing location of the stable is. My understanding is that that would return to how it looked prior to the stable being put in, but not necessarily to how it looked years before that, when potentially there had been landfill put on, onto that paddock.
So the hard standing that has been created for the stables where they currently are will go?
That's correct, yes. That's my understanding, yes. Yeah.
Yeah. Councillor McLean, thank you, thank you, Katie.
Thank you again, Chair. Yes, I think we were told earlier that the drop from the new level to the old level is some five foot, which the applicant's representative referred to as insignificant, I think. It's not, it is five foot, which is nearly as tall as I am. So that is a huge difference from the original land level. Okay, that may be wrong and I will be advised by one of the officers if what I thought I heard was wrong. But the main question I have is, I looked on our page 27 of the documentation. It says the following policies of the South Downs National Park are relevant to this application. But looking through the planned document on SD24 equestrian uses, I don't see any mention of SD24 equestrian uses, particularly 6.67 and 6.68. And I wonder, were they considered or was there an oversight here? Or did they not need to be considered? I guess is a fair way of asking the question.
Chairman, on page 27, where the policies are listed, I think what's happened is SD24 has circled round from SD20, so it talks about the development managing policy. SD24 equestrian uses is clearly listed there as one of the policies that has been considered. And it's labelled on page 28 as under the principle of development. And I've certainly got it open here now in front of me and looking at what it says in terms of the approach that the South Downs National Park's local plan seeks us to take in decision making. And I'm confident Hannah had regard to that in her assessment.
Thank you. Any more questions, Vice Chair?
No more questions, Chair. Thank you.
No debate.
And I have a contribution whilst everybody else think about it. Thank you, Chair. I have to put my camera on for this too, don't I? Thank you, Chair. I think this has been a very difficult one to consider. We do have to consider the application that's in front of us, but I think that we should be considering it. Not, not taking into account the existing stable, which was built without planning consent, but as if we were facing an empty paddock and, and that this proposal was, was being put to us. And I think in those circumstances, there is no way that we would agree to this. It's a small paddock, but we're proposing to put in a stable large enough for three horses, which we understand is, is not appropriate. The, the driveways are necessarily long. You could choose the, the most, you know, the, the worst place in the field to put a, a stable in terms of churning up half the, half the paddock with, with a, with a driveway. And I think that the impact on the neighbour's amenity is, is, is unacceptable. Regardless of owls and, and hospitals and all the rest of it. I think, I think that the impact on their enjoyment of their private amenity space, their garden, is, is undue. I think it goes against the spirit and the principle. And in fact, the text, the, the actual words of the South Downs National Park's planning policy, I think it's probably marginal, but I do think that it does go against the spirit of their, their planning plans. And I, I'm afraid that I'm, I'm not going to be able to support the officer's recommendation. Thank you. Now we have councillor Reed, we have councillor Laming and we have councillor Rafael also with debate, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. I concur with the Vice Chairman. If this was to come to us as an application without anything on site, we would look at it in exactly the same manner. I suppose one of the big advantages of having something on site that shouldn't be there was the fact that it's highlighted it even more strongly, at least to me. I think there could well be drainage problems. The, whilst chalk is porous, we are getting a lot of deluge of rain, very sudden storms, which means the ground cannot absorb and it will run down. To run down into stables doesn't, to me, seems very sensible. The other point is, and I think it was raised by councillor Laming, is the waste. The waste is important and in usual circumstances, the, the waste pile is not too far away from the proposed stables, which means it will be on the boundary of the neighbouring property. What we haven't, or what I noticed when we were at the site visit, was the use of the surrounding land, which is used for flight paths, et cetera. So the crucial, it's crucial to the next door neighbour's keeping of rather poorly birds. It will be overlooked. I believe that there are other locations on site where this can be less intrusive, away from neighbouring properties. If the, if the applicant doesn't want it near theirs, why should they really put up with it from, put it on to somebody else? I believe that councillor Lumby hit the nail on the head. South Downs National Park planning, SD24, A, B, D, G, and also with respect to 6.67 and 6.68. In the light of that, I would be unable to support the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Laming?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with the previous two councillors. I think that if we're looking at this as a brand new application, it is an inappropriate site and causing a great deal of inconsideration for the neighbours. It is also, in my experience, not a very good idea to have horses at, stables at the bottom of the slope because they do churn it up around that particular area and you try to keep that area as dry as possible. I think looking at the field size, that... I think looking at the field size, that it's only large enough for one horse, according to the statistics that we've been told today. Horses are herd animals and they usually like to have at least two. And whilst it's got three stables there, I'm sure one of them will be used as attack rooms. There's a possibility of two horses minimum on that field. And I really don't see how we can accept that the position of this, the intrusion into the neighbours, the track across the field seems to be highly inappropriate as well, when there is alternative areas that could be considered. And for that reason, I cannot support this application and will be minded to refuse it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Raffel?
Thank you, Chair. Get this off there. Obviously, you're not going to see me.
We concluded?
We will be given planning permission for land levels that have been done, five feet, so councillor McLean says. Site, the stables will be removing a beautiful tree, and they were complaining about having to cut trees down in the woods, so, which is wild. I, I think this is a bad application. The site for the stable should be somewhere away from the neighbours' property, and I should not be supporting it.
Thank you. And councillor McLean, I think you've withdrawn your request to speak, have you? Or do you want to speak?
I think it's all been said by my colleagues, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And councillor Rutter, any further requests?
No further requests to debate, Chair, thank you.
And I wish to, I agree with my fellow colleagues on the, on the committee, this is a most unusual application, and there's nothing wrong with retrospective applications. But I think, I agree with my, my colleagues, that I do agree that if it had come to us afresh, we wouldn't have agreed that corner, for all the reasons that we've heard, but we probably would have agreed, the corner in the south-east at the top, so you're moving right across horizontally, because that would have meant much less track. And I do appreciate the efforts that have been made to try and make that track look more natural in the landscape, which is important in the South Downs National Park. But there's a lot of unhappiness locally over this application. Two parish councils, a ward councillor, well, both ward councillors now. And regardless of what or why not be happening, it will affect the birds of prey, and whether they need planning permission or not is an irrelevant issue here. And the size of the stables is large. You know, it is a small field and I would question the need for three stables unless they're going to use one to put manure and storage. The, this is not, in my opinion, the most suitable spot to put this, these stables. And we've got South Downs twenty-four in front of me, and I agree with councillor Reed, it's got to be well-located to existing utilities and transport infrastructure. And six point six seven talks about changing the character of the land, and six point six eight about, you know, buildings where they should be sited. So I, I really feel that I would like, I mean, we've had a lot of discussion about the raising of the land, but I would quite appreciate the South Downs further comment on if there is another application, because it looks like this one will be refused. If it's not refused, I would like to propose that we have a condition that there are no horse boxes parked on this site, because horse boxes are very high and they would be very visible in the landscape, and they don't need to be there. And the agent said he was happy to have a condition put on to that effect. And so I think, I don't think there are any more contributions to debate, councillor Rutter?
No, that's right, Chair, thank you.
So, Dave, over to you to do a roll call.
Sorry, Chair, I beg your pardon. Councillor McLean would like to speak about the condition, I think, or suggest another one. Thank you.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. One of the things that came out in the presentation that we've not really spoken about yet, but is that the roadway that's coming up to the stables is also being used to access the house and also as an overspill parking area for visitors to the house, because the garden was too small, as I actually pointed out to us in the report. Could we also put a condition in that the roadway itself is only able to be, I don't know how you'd enforce it, but it is a fair condition, that it is not used as an overspill parking area for visitors to the house, it is simply access to the stable, if we are the...
Yeah.
Yes, minded to approve.
Looking at page forty of our agenda, it doesn't seem to be in the application site. Hannah, do you want to comment on that? No parking in, in the woodland before you get to the field?
No, I was talking about the area in front of the house, that's that bus next to the stables. People have been driving in, we've been told, and parking to get access to the house.
So you're concerned about a number of cars being parked actually in the field?
That is correct.
Yeah. Hannah, what do you think of this one?
Thank you, Chair. No, I do agree with that condition. If it should be a case that obviously the paddock is the paddock and nobody should be parking in it, but we've got no evidence to say that people have been using it as a parking area. Obviously, if you're minded to approve the application, we can obviously negotiate conditions.
Chairman, if I can chip in now, I'm sorry, I don't quite agree with that, I'm afraid. What I would say is the page fifty, the plan on page fifty-seven shows you the proposals to alter the track, to make it seeded and more grassed, and then it takes you into where the new stable area is proposed, and it shows you a hard standing in front of that. Now, that, to my mind, would limit the level of parking available for this anyway. And I do, I think one councillor suggested, maybe your South Chair, about horse boxes and loose boxes, and I think we could, if you were minded to approve this, amend condition, and I'm sorry, I'm rustling the papers, amend condition eight, which talks about no new field shelters, fences or shuttles, and we could add in there loose boxes or horse boxes, were you minded to approve that? But I think the, the hard standing area in front of the stables would be limiting. And if you were minded to approve this, there's a condition requiring development to be undertaken in accordance with these plans, and that would, in my view, cover that matter, Chair.
Thank you. I see that there are now two more councillors wanting to speak. I'm just looking at, I don't have a condition eight. Oh, no, 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 I'm so, I'm so sorry. I'll, I'll look at that while the next councillors are speaking. So councillor Reed, you wanted to come in again?
Thank you, Chairman. Just, just to clarify that if the application is lost, then the track is also lost as well. But also, the horse boxes, which I did have a note on to talk about, but failed, would also mean horse transport rather than horse box. This would accommodate the big, large vehicles.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the hard standing, just to clarify, is right up in front of the stables, is that right, Hannah? You're muted, Hannah. You're muted. Yeah, it is fine, okay. She's nodding.
Nodding. Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Sorry, Chair, can I just come back? I don't think we've addressed, when we were up on the site visit, there was a chap cutting the hedge in front of the property, and any car could have driven down that track and nosed in to the area against the hedge. It didn't need a hard standing to park. Anything could park in front of the hedge, ten, fifteen cars. And we need to protect the area from people doing that if they turn up for a party.
Chairman, that's outside the scope of this application, I'm afraid. We really can only determine what's in front of us, you know, if the applicant chose to have a party and invited lots of people, I think that would be, you know, more a one-off, which would be outside the scope of us to consider. I think the conditions that Hannah's proposed require that track to be taken up more and laid to grass with just a central reservation, as I understand it. And that would, I appreciate it won't stop people that are willing four-by-fours, et cetera, but it will, to a degree, limit the landscape harm, which is what we're assessing in terms of this application.
So I've got councillor Leiming wanting to speak?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm concerned that the track will be used for a rear access to the cottage as such, and that's not really on, because that will increase the traffic quite a lot. I think that part of the condition, if we're minded to approve this, should be no access to the house from the track.
Chairman, if I can help, that isn't part of the planning application, so that condition would not be reasonable or enforceable, Chair.
But you're showing on the map an access point to the house on page fifty-seven.
And that's a gated area, Chair, what we saw when we were on-site, wasn't it? That's the way we came in?
No, no, no. When you come down, just as you go around the curve at the bottom, in front of where the stables are at the moment, there is an access point into the Hayden Barn Cottage.
And that was the gated area, Chair, that we saw when we were on-site?
Yeah. But I mean, it means that, like, it means that as a permanent wire, getting in and out of their property if they want to, which would increase the access.
And Chairman, if they do that, we will investigate whether that's a breach of planning control in its own right, it doesn't form part of this submission.
I'm sorry, again, Chair, I've got to come back. If you can open a gate.
Just stop, please, everybody. Right, could we just go through the proper procedure, because I've got all these people wanting to speak all at the same time. And just before we do go on to councillor McLean, councillor Reed, isn't the, at the gate that goes down to Hayden Barn Cottage a different level to the application site? Hannah, isn't it a different level?
Chair, yes, that is correct. Hayden Barn are set lower than the application site.
Oh, I thought that was an impediment in itself. So councillor...
No, there was traffic moving in and out, Chair, sorry to interrupt, but there was vehicles parked in the back when we were there.
Right, Fiona, did you want to come in?
Chair, yes, I'd like to chip in here. Given the tone of debate and the numbers, may I suggest that it is unlikely that this application is going to be approved, and therefore, if you wish to discuss conditions, perhaps you could do that after the vote has been taken and if appropriate to do so at that point. As I said, we've heard what members have said in debate, and I think maybe it would be an idea to move straight on to the vote at this point. We can deal with any conditions if necessary afterwards. Thank you.
I agree, but normally we vote for, with the condition as per.
Chair, I, I, but given, given the direction of debate, we probably discuss the issues after.
But it could be councillors who change their mind, Fiona.
They do, yeah.
But thank you for the legal advice. So any councillors, in the light of what you've just heard from our legal adviser, does any other councillor want to speak before we go to the vote? Is that a no?
That's a no, Chair, thank you.
Okay. So, Dave, over to you to do the roll call for the vote.
Yes, thank you. This is for the recommendation of the application to be approved. Councillor Evans?
Against.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
I'm happy to support the officer's decision.
Thank you. Councillor Leiming?
Against.
Councillor McLean?
Against.
Councillor Reed?
Against.
Councillor Raffel?
Against.
Councillor Rutter?
Against.
Councillor Bentoe?
Against.
So that's seven members against and one in favour, Chair.
So, yes, so aggressively that application is refused, and no doubt the applicant and the agent are listening to the steer, should they want to put in another application. Thank you very much. I'm going to move on before we have a break to the next item.
Chairman, I think you're just probably about to hear from our solicitor, we do need to ratify the reasons for refusal. Fiona, do you have something?
Reasons for refusal. Councillor Reed?
Chairman, as already stated, South Downs National Park policies, SD twenty-four, A, B, D and G, and six point seven and, sorry, six point six seven and six point six eight.
Yeah, I would have also had E as well, SD twenty-four E, about well-located to existing utilities, because we do know that there is water on the other side of the paddock. Any other contributions to the reasons for refusal? Councillor Leiming, are you wanting to speak? And then I'll come to you, councillor Raffel. Councillor Leiming, are you wanting to speak?
No, no, thank you.
Right, so the yellow hand is gray that you're all indicating, because you remember to take it off once you've asked your question. Thank you. Councillor Raffel?
I just said I think councillor Reed has covered everything I want to say.
Thank you. Julie, I'm going to ask you whether you think that is sufficient as a reason from what you've heard.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I thought I'd better come back on the camera to help you with that. Yeah, very helpfully heard what you've said through your questions and debate, and some of the members' feedback there to assist with your reasons for refusal. I mean, I recommend that your reasons for refusal would relate to policies SD four, which is the landscape-led approach of the South Downs National Park. I'm sorry, I'm rustling papers, I'm just trying to find it now, it's not the easiest. There we are. SD twenty-four talks about landscape character, and there are five core principles in there. And then, as you've all picked up on, SD twenty-four, which has one policy, A to G, which talks about equestrian uses. Now, I don't necessarily agree with all the points about, you know, I think A, where it relates to existing utilities and transport infrastructure, I think, you know, in terms of the application, I think that probably is sufficient. I think we'd struggle to defend a reason for refusal on that. If I can read out to you what I've kind of loosely put together, and then members can decide if that covers enough for you, how you're feeling about it. So I would suggest something along the lines of the proposed sighting of the stables, track and alterations to the levels results in harm to the landscape character of this part of the national park by reason of citing scale and raising the land, which fails to reflect the context and type of landscape and special qualities of this part of the national park. And then I've added a bit in, hearing what members have said about the neighbour immunity and fails to demonstrate a conservation-based land, land management approach, and then that would be contrary to policies SD four and twenty-four of the national park. Now, I know members have said A, B and six point seven, six point eight, but I think that reason for refusal, quoting those two policies, would enable your officers on your behalf to, to introduce those hanging off of the policies to expand on the members' reason for refusal in this case. But I suggest it'd be one reason for refusal along the lines that I've read out, if members are minded to agree to that, Chair.
Thank you very much. So can I just have a little bit of legal advice here? Do I, do we have to agree those policies, those reasons for refusal on those two policies? And then do we have to reconfirm that we're happy with it to be refused on that basis? Fiona?
Chair, you have to put it to the committee that the application be refused for the reasons as summarised by Julie and to vote on.
Right, so I intend to do that now, then. So this is now recommended for refusal for the reasons which Julie has put forward, namely SD twenty-four and SD four. So, Dave, could you take a roll?
Yes, of course, Chair. Yes.
Full, if you approve that, or against, if you are against.
Councillor Evans?
Full.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Okay, I'll approve the recommendations.
Thank you. Well, the reasons... What, the reasons for refusal? Councillors, please? Yes, okay, thank you. Councillor Leaming?
Agreed.
Councillor McLean?
McLean, but agreed.
Oh, yes, sorry, yes. Councillor Reed?
Agreed.
Councillor Raffel?
Agreed.
Councillor Rutter?
Agreed.
And councillor Bentout?
Agreed.
That's all, that's all members in favour of the reason for refusal.
So that finally finishes that application, which is refused for the reasons stated.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can we now move on to agenda item eight before we have a break? This is case number twenty slash oh oh four six two slash A B C, reported advertisements and signage relating to Knights Quarter. Knights Quarter is the name that the developer has given this area, but is not necessarily the name it's going to end up with, which comes back to the post office and the city council, street naming department and local members. So the case officer is Cat Watson. Good morning, Cat. Cat, are you there?
Well, we just need the officers, one to swap in and one to swap out, so we just need a moment to do that. So we're just going off the microphone just for a moment to facilitate that turnaround. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, for those listening at home or in the office, there's always a little delay in between applications so that we can swap over the case officer. And while we're still waiting, when we get to question, we have no public speakers on this, so we'll go straight into questions. And I will take questions on all of the report because it's a short report. So we have the map in front of us, and further on in our pack, we have the details of the signage that this application is seeking permission for, citing on page sixty-six, and what it actually is on page sixty-seven. And I think we're still waiting for the officer to slot in. This sort of gaffe always reminds me of that tape of Gerald Hoffnung. I don't know if anyone else has heard it, when... So he's then desperate to fill in this space, talking about the conductor and how long he lived, and then he gets on to a description of the legs of the piano. But I don't think I have to do that because Cat's here, is she?
She is, Chair.
Good morning, Cat.
Morning, Chair.
So it's over to you for your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. So the application is for new signage at the former Hampshire Constabulary Headquarters on Romsey Road. The signage will be on the Romsey Road frontage. So here we can see the designs of the signage. So it's for a total number of ten signs. So these are the totem signs on the left-hand side, which will be immediately adjacent to the main entrance on Romsey Road. In the middle, we've got the flags, and there'll be one on either side of the junction with Romsey Road from the site. And then on the right-hand side, we've got the parking totems. They will be inside the site, just to the left as you enter. Here we have the hoardings for Romsey Road. So they will be replacing the existing hoardings. There'll be no change in their positioning, it's just the new branding. Internally, we've got a living wall sign, so we've got on one of the completed dwellings, this sort of living wall will be visible with the logo. And then here we have a plan showing the types of signage and where the signs will be. So again, if we look at the Romsey Road entrance, we've got the totems immediately adjacent to Romsey Road, we've got the flags. And as we go into the site, we've got the parking totem signage. Then just behind those, we've got the living wall sign. As we go up towards the sort of show home, we've got the fret cart logo on the steps, and then mobile swing sign to just direct people to the sales suite. The blue line marks where additional hoardings will be erected, and then we'll have the hoardings replacing what is already there at the Romsey Road entrance. And that completes my presentation. My recommendation is to permit, subject to the conditions included on the permitted report. I'll have to take any questions, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Cat. Could I just ask you a question before, while others are putting on chat, that they want us to ask a question? We've had nineteen letters of objection saying that signage should not be placed on the historic Flint Wall at the junction of Romsey Road and West End Terrace. Is there any signage planned for that area?
No, Chair, there is a previous, applications for advert consent did include signage there, but on the advice of our Historic Environment Officer, that was withdrawn. But on this current application, there is no composed signage on that Flint Wall at the junction of West End Terrace.
And then the City of Winchester Trust, who I respect greatly, have said that it seems excessive for a single enclosed site. But is this quite normal for a development of this size?
Chair, yes, it is quite usual. In terms of what will be visible from Romsey Road, they're replacing the hoardings, exactly the same hoarding, in same positions, but obviously their new branding. And they'll be putting sign, flags and totems at the front. The difference is internally, so there'll be hoardings internally and additional signage. It is in the conservation area. However, the Historic Environment Officer didn't consider that the internal signage would be significantly harmful, and as the external signage is pretty much replacing like for like, there wouldn't be any significant harm to the setting of the conservation area. And actually, originally, when the application was submitted, the applicant proposed a total of twenty-two different signs, which we did consider excessive, and that's why it has now been reduced down to ten, which we consider was much more acceptable.
Well, perhaps that objection was to the original twenty-two. Vice Chair?
Yes, we have councillor Raffel with a question, Chair, thank you.
Councillor Raffel?
Thank you, Chair. Rose talked about conditions. Where are they? What page?
Page sixty-three.
Just checking that, thank you, Chair.
Page sixty-three.
Page sixty-three and sixty-four, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Conditions are normally at the end.
At the end. It's a very short report.
Thank you very much.
Vice Chair, any further questions?
No further questions, Chair, thank you.
So we'll move on to debate, any debate? I have no problem in approving this application. The company have, the development company have two hundred and eight homes to sell, so they have to advertise them in some way, and it's only temporary anyway, and this permission will expire in March two thousand and twenty-three. Obviously, the original proposal of twenty-two has been negotiated down, which is good. So I would approve the application. Any other contributions?
No other contributions to debate, Chair.
We can move to the vote. This application has been recommended for approval. Over to you, Dave, for the roll call.
Yes, thank you again, Chair. Councillor Evans?
Full.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Full.
Councillor Leaming?
Full.
Councillor McLean?
Full.
Councillor Reed?
Full.
Councillor Raffel?
Full.
Councillor Rutter?
Full.
And councillor Bentout?
Full.
Thank you, that's all members in support, Chair.
So that application is approved, subject to the conditions, which are on page sixty-three and sixty-four, and the informatives on page sixty-four. Thank you very much, that's the end of that item. And then I'm going to take a short break. I make it nearly twenty-five-two, so we'll take a break until, we'll take a fifteen-minute break, so that will make it nearly ten-two.
Thank you.
Take a break then. Thank you. Dave, do you just want to check that everybody is back?
Yes, thank you, thank you Chair, just give me a moment just to set this off screen and then I will do. Chair, would you like me to just let the member of the public in as well?
Oh yes, yes.
Yes, of course, just give me a moment please.
Only got one member of the public.
Yeah.
Awesome. Morning Rose.
Morning.
Just waiting for a member of the public to be let into the meeting.
Chair, I can confirm that Mr Craig Lawson is now in the meeting as a guest. So I will, I will start by taking a roll call again after a break. Just to make sure that everybody's back in the meeting at the moment. Can I then please go through the members please, councillor Evans obviously?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yes councillor Gordon Smith?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, councillor Leaming?
Present.
Councillor McLean?
Present.
Thank you, councillor Reid?
Isaiah.
Councillor Raffel?
Present.
Councillor Rutte?
Present.
And councillor Bentout as well.
Yeah, present.
Yes, that's all, all members back in the meeting, thank you Chair.
So we're going to proceed with agenda item nine, which is 20/00578/FUR, as a proposed new dwelling to the end of existing terrace at 24 Langton Close Winchester. The case officer is Rose Lister. And Rose, I believe you're ready to start your presentation?
Yes, thank you Chair. Here we have the red line plan. Stockbridge Road runs just south here and Langton Close here. Here we have an aerial view of the site. Stockbridge Road here, Langton Close, there are some privately owned garages here. They have no condition on them to restrict their use for parking. Here we have some plans, to the top left hand side, we have the proposed block plan. The blue line here would be the proposed new building line as a result of the proposed development. On the right hand side here at the top is the colour version. There was, there were some amended plans submitted at the last minute. They indicated two trees to be planted at the rear here. And at the bottom here, we have the proposed layout. On the left hand side is the existing dwelling at number 24. And on the right hand side is the new proposed dwelling. On the ground floor, you'd have a kitchen, living, dining area with a WC. On the first floor, you'd have a bedroom with an en suite and a study. And on the top floor, you would have two bedrooms and a bathroom. Here's the proposed elevations, they are very similar in design and materials to the existing terraces. You can see here the front elevation facing Langton Close. The side elevation here on the top right hand side, facing Stockbridge Road. And the rear elevation here. And on the bottom left hand side is a photo of the site on the corner of Langton Close and Stockbridge Road, looking towards the site. And a few more photographs, on the top left hand side here, we have a photo looking directly at the side elevation from Stockbridge Road outside the road back in. On the right hand side at the top is a closer photo of the corner of Langton Close and Stockbridge Road, looking up towards the site. And on the bottom here is taken from a few feet down the hill, looking up the hill towards the site. And you can see the highway verge here. The recommendation is to refuse. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much, sorry for the delay, I pressed the wrong button. And I should perhaps mention before we go any further that this was subject to a sort of individual site visit. All councillors were recommended to go and visit the site and view the proposals actually on, on ground. And they will tell us if they didn't manage to get up to, to see the site. But I certainly viewed it last Friday. So we have one public speaker who is the agent, Craig Lawson. Good morning, Mr Lawson.
Good morning. Good morning Chair.
Good morning. And when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Okay, good morning councillors, my name's Craig Lawson and I am the owner and architect for 24 Langton Close. The reasons for refusal refers to policies DM16 and the high quality places SPD. But the planners haven't actually identified the specific sections of these policies where the design falls short. As you know, DM16 constitutes seven key points. And we believe this design adequately fulfills every one. However, based on minor commentary, we've assumed the council's primary concern is with the building line. The design has carefully considered the mass and scale. Drawing 104, which has not been included in the planning pack, shows that in relation to the neighbouring properties along Stockbridge Road, the new dwelling will actually be farther from the pavement and the overall height, including the embankment, will be lower. We found roughly 30 examples of similar building line relationships throughout the city. The prominence and visual impact of the site has been overstated by the planners. The nearby development on Hallowood Road is a clear example, which had a similar level of prominence and visual impact. And now Bill stands proud of the existing two storey house. It was also an elevated undeveloped site with far more trees, which have now been removed. This creates a much harder edge to the pavement, whereas our proposal will result in additional greenery to the area. Policy DM16 also seeks a design that responds positively to the character, appearance and variety of the area, which this design does, through the sympathetic extension of the terrace, the use of new higher quality materials, which will replace a tired looking end elevation, whilst providing a relatively affordable home in a sought after location. DM16 also speaks of providing positive boundary treatments that relate to the context. The retention of the existing hedge and the planting of new trees help to enclose a gap in the tree lined street. Minimizes any impacts on views up Stockbridge Road and provides protection to the rear gardens from the noise of the newly developed pub garden at the road back in. Furthermore, the balance of hard and soft landscape and Benin cycle storage to the rear and south facing orientation demonstrate full compliance with DM16. With regards to the high quality places SPD, there is again no specific mention of what the design fails to achieve. But as the council has stated, Langton Close marks a change in the character and spatial characteristics along Stockbridge Road. Their assessment doesn't account for the different orientation of the terrace or the fact that this site is a corner plot. The proposal is a well considered design, responds well to the context, is in a sustainable location, will rejuvenate a tired development and enhance the green aspects without having any negative effect on the neighbours or spatial characteristics of the area. It's fully compliant with policy, which is why the case officer originally wanted to approve the application. And we would therefore respectively ask that you support this application too. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And if I could just pick off councillors' questions to you. I, I see from the report, oh I think, I don't know if it was in the report, but that you did seek pre-application advice when you're considering extending 24 to a house. But you didn't take pre-application advice for this proposal, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair, any other questions from councillors?
I have a question Chair, if I may, and at the moment there are no other questions, so. Oh no, we have Russell Gordon Smith, okay. So my question, if I may Craig, thank you for coming, is, oh I might have turned my camera on as well, there we are. Thank you. With regard to the pre-application advice that you asked for, that was to turn number 24 into a five bedroom house, wasn't it?
That's correct, yeah.
Can you tell me what, approximately, what, because that, that was quite positive, wasn't it? The response you got to that advice? Which I think was what, what encouraged you to go for this new house rather than extending the existing one. But can you just tell me what percentage of the proposed new dwelling that, that extension would have taken up? So, so we can compare the relative sizes of, of what you had thought about and what you're now proposing?
Yeah, yeah, it says 66%. Basically, the pre-planning application was for a side extension that was three metres in width. Whereas the proposed dwelling is for a 4.5 metre width dwelling.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you very much. And, and can I just also ask about the landscaping? So it's a very, it is a very steep edge there. So will you have to build up the ground at all?
No.
To build this new house? And, and how is it, how are you going to treat the edge? If you could just give us a bit more detail about that and the, the proposed landscaping? Thank you.
Absolutely. So what's probably not apparent is that the, the land that the existing house is built on is actually the natural ground level. So the chalk is only about 200 millimetres below the actual ground surface there. And that carries on through to the embankment. So the embankment itself is actually primarily chalk based. And therefore we give a good foundation to build from. And, and that would also provide the integrity for that embankment to retain in place and be structurally sound. The highways have made a comment about the structural integrity of that embankment being retained or improved. And that's exactly what would happen just purely by the natural substance below. And that's exactly what would happen just purely by the natural substance below.
And and a bit more about the landscaping. So because it will be quite a an overbearing, potentially overbearing end, because it's coming closer to that high, the top of the embankment. So how are you going to soften that? How are you proposing to do that?
So the the existing hedge that we have along the the boundary treatment at the moment will be retained. It will be moved ever so slightly over just to make way for the existing house. But it doesn't really have any impact on the actual the embankment or the reduction in the green aspects of the site at the moment. But the proposed new, the new drawings that we were submitted, and they included two additional silver birch trees, which would be on the same line as the hedgerow. And that would encourage a bit more sort of greenery of the area, give that protection from the public, the pub garden that's been developed into the rear gardens of Langton Close, as well as just creating a bit more of a tree lined aspect along there. I mean, potentially, we could actually go further with this embankment to improve and maybe shrubs or something. Because although it's a highways, it's it's public, it's privately owned, sorry. And but highways have a right to maintain it. And we would sort of seek to keep the maintenance as minimal as possible on that. But by introducing trees, the trees are not on the highways aspect of that land. They'll be on the private ownership. So it would become a private ownership and sort of responsibility. But in terms of overall landscaping, I think filling that little gap that exists would actually be quite beneficial for the area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to councillor Gordon Smith, could I just ask officers about the form of pre application advice for extending the house to a larger property? Was it a reserved approval, subject to the details coming in? Before we go down the route of, oh, that would be better? Do the officers want to comment on that?
Pre application advice is always a conditional thing, depending on the details of any application. We did make suggestions to reduce the size as well, if I recall. But overall, it was a, it was considered that it could be acceptable.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Gordon Smith?
Yes, I just, I was wondering, with the existing house, it's got two windows on the side elevation and building alongside it. Is that not going to reduce the light levels inside the adjacent existing building?
No. Well, obviously it will reduce the light levels, but I won't reduce them to an unacceptable level because you've got the mid terrace units, which are all of the same typology and don't feature those side windows. And the the glazing both to the south and to the north of the property are relatively large. So you would actually get quite a lot of daylight and as like living in 24, it is quite a bright place to be. So any reduction in the side elevation of the windows may actually be welcome in our house because of the heat that we felt recently. But obviously, the new standards of building and the higher U values that would be presented with the new dwelling that would need to be achieved would actually help that scenario.
Okay, thanks.
I've got a further question based on what you said. Could I just have clarification over the highway land? Are you proposing to take over the highway verge or land? And has that been agreed with the county?
And we're not proposing to take over the highway land. At the minute, we have private ownership of the verge. And but highways have an easement over this. And but we are not proposing to encroach into what the highway's easement distance is from the edge of the path. So we're almost, we're sticking to our land and not infringing on highways in any way.
So the easement that the county has, they don't need to approve anything that might happen on your land. I appreciate it's your land.
And that's, that's right. Yeah, basically, the the extent of the highway's responsibility will be cutting the grass. That's effectively it. So.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Vice Chairman, any more questions?
No further questions, Chair.
Rose, anything you'd like to say in response to what you've heard from Mr Lawson?
No, thank you, Chair.
No, okay. So we move then on to the planning considerations, which will take questions on any of them. It's page 73 to 75. There was a query, Rose, raised by Mr Lawson about the reasons for refusal and the high quality places SPD. Is there anything specific that we should be highlighting in the high quality SPD, the high quality places SPD?
Bear with me, Chair. I'll just get to the relevant section.
Chair, whilst Rose is doing that, could we perhaps invite Mr Lawson to mute his microphone and switch off his camera now that his contribution is over? Thank you.
Chair, if on page 55, there's a relevant section regarding proportions and corner buildings. And page 54, there's a section on massing and scale as well.
I see. Thank you. So if that is going to this, that's the recommendation. And I'll be guided by Mrs Pinnick or I think we've got Nick Parker here as well today, haven't we? Do we need to specify in the reasons for refusal? The pages 54, 55, that's massing and scale and proportions that Rose has just pointed us to.
Chairman, I'm happy Nick Parker wanted to come in and help answer that question, Chair. Nick?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I am here. I'll just switch my camera on. I think it would be helpful, yes. Certainly, we've identified harm, as you can see from Rose's report. The reason refusal does refer to policy DM16 and the high quality places, but it doesn't identify which areas of those, that policy and SPD that it firstly. So I think it would aid all to to actually include those those details in the reason for refusal.
Yeah, I'll come back to you then for the more detailed proposal. Vice Chair, any more questions on any of the report?
No more questions, Chair. Thank you.
So I think we've got to debate. Oh, sorry, councillor Reed, you wanted to ask a question? Debate, was it?
Sorry, Chairman, it was probably my fault for not keeping up. It's just a question with regards to the parking. On page 74, the highway have shown some concerns, the highway officer has shown some concerns to the parking element in that area. I have visited that area and I thought the pre site visit was extremely useful. The one thing that the neighbouring properties had concern of was the parking in general. It was a little bit of a pig's ear, shall we say. With the property having one parking space to be provided, will the council be extending the roadside parking in that area?
Rose, you want to answer that?
And so not what I'm aware of, Chair. And I know there is an issue with parking. The assessment on page 74 did conclude that the location is highly sustainable with a few minutes walk from local amenities and public transport links, which is why the reduced parking was considered to be not to contribute towards a refusal reason. And I don't know of any current proposals to extend the on street parking around Stockbridge Road.
Thank you. And then as you've drawn our attention, councillor Reed, to that paragraph, there are other concerns. I'm not sure that they're all material planning. Ones about the level of parking we've dealt with, relocation of a street lamp, height of the proposed replacement tree, retention of double yellow lines and integrity of the embankment. Does anyone want to comment? Any officer want to comment on those highway concerns?
So in regard to the street lamp and the double yellow lines, they would be something that the applicant would need to deal with outside of planning. The height of the proposed replacement tree, the highways officer commented that should the application be considered successful, then a condition would be required to limit the height to one metre, I believe, but I can double check.
Yeah, thank you. And the embankment?
I believe the embankment was discussed previously. And it was a construction detail for building control. That would be considered under.
Any further questions, Vice Chair?
No further questions, Chair.
So we move into debate.
And I have a contribution to debate, Chair, whilst the others are considering it. Thank you. And then we have Miss Councillor Reed. So, thank you. Actually, I went to see this site as requested. But I went before the papers were were published, so I hadn't read the officer recommendation. So I went with the assumption that we were looking at what would be being proposed or being proposed for acceptance by by the officers. And I looked at it and I considered it on site. I drove around, I walked around and looked at neighbouring properties and looked at the terrace itself and looked at the proposed new house. And I considered that it would be acceptable in that position and with the landscaping that was proposed. And I thought that it would be much better to have a new three bedroom house in this very sustainable location than to have an extension which which would turn a small terrace house into a five bedroom house. And I could see no harm in in the development. So I was then rather surprised when I actually read the papers and saw that the officers were in fact recommending it for refusal. So I looked very carefully again. But I'm afraid I do still stick with my initial reaction to thinking about putting another house on the end of that terrace. And that is that it would be a sympathetic extension, a new house, exactly matching the others. And that it would provide a much needed, smaller dwelling in a very sustainable, desirable location. I don't think it would be out of place and I don't think it would be duly massive in the landscape. And because it's such a sustainable location, I think we can totally justify only one parking space. There is provision for cycle storage behind and so on. I think I would ask for conditions, particularly on landscaping and to remove permitted development rights, because it is a very tight location. I wouldn't want to see anything extra built behind it. So I would propose that we remove permitted development rights. So that would mean that any new extension to the dwelling would have to come through planning. But apart from that, I'm I'm happy to support the the application and I'm afraid go against the officer recommendation. Thank you, Chair. We now have councillor Reed, we have councillor Gordon Smith and councillor Laming wishing to debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. Like the Vice Chairman, I visited the site prior to receiving paperwork. So I looked at it as a possibility of a new structure there. The one thing that I was met with by residents, because they asked why I was around, was their grave concern over parking. Parking is a very, very big issue. It is a sustainable site. However, majority of people have not just one car, but possibly even two cars. Number 19, which is at the other end of the block, does not have a parking space. And in front of that row of buildings, there is in fact a on road parking. So you may well be able to get your car up or may not be able to get it off of the little driveway. Because we, as an authority, have put down on side road parking. So it does concern me, that element of it. I'm not terribly enthused by moving the building line forward, not by just a small amount, but sort of double in order to accommodate this proposed new structure. To me, it would give an adverse visual effect on the building line on Stockbridge Road at this particular point. I'm more than happy to go along with the officer's recommendation. Due to the parking issues, the realignment of Stockbridge Road building line would be adverse. And I'm happy to go along the lines of the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Gordon Smith?
Yes, well, I'm not sure if I can agree with the officers. In terms of a high quality place, you know, the building matches the existing structure, almost brick for brick. So unless we were to condemn them as being poor design, I don't think that's much of an argument. And the plot line, it does, the 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 building line does step back further up the hill. But lower down towards the station and so on, it's, it doesn't go out as far as the plot line. So it doesn't seem an argument to me. And to me, wearing my urban designer's hat, I would say it's quite, you know, a very competent and sensible designer makes use of a tight space. So I don't think I would support their refusal.
Councillor Laming? Thank you. Councillor Laming?
Okay, thank you. I actually thought it was a very good report. I mean, it geared up a number of things in my mind. I think that it does extend the building line out on the Stockbridge Road, which has, does have a detrimental effect on the area. The thing that really worries me is the parking on this. We've turned down applications on other sites for being so close to a corner. And I wonder how this conflicts with the regulations as they are at the moment. And there is generally in that area considerable parking problems, which this was only increase. I think the reasons that the officers put down for her decision actually hold water very tightly. So I should be going along with the recommendation.
Thank you. My contribution is that, yes, I went on site and I had already read the report, which I totally agree with, and the reasons for refusal. And I don't want to see the extension of those buildings coming further out into the Stockbridge Road street scene. The agent, Mr Lawson, pointed out another modern design further down the road. And that I thought looked quite pleasing, you know, in itself. But I don't actually want to see an extension of that architecture coming out, because I think it would be very in your face. I totally agree with the recommended recommendation for refusal of the high quality places. And I've just read page 54, 55. And I think it will be very intrusive in the street scene and have a very adverse visual effect, as councillor Reed said. And so I shall not be voting to approve this application. Vice Chair, any more contributions?
Yes, yes, Chair, we have from councillor Bentot and councillor McLean.
Councillor Bentot?
Good morning or maybe good afternoon by now. Yeah, I went, visited the site yesterday in the pouring rain. So I've got a different sort of view for other people, maybe. Parking was difficult, but this one, it has got a parking space. And so there is not going to necessarily increase, although I do realise many households. And so there is not going to necessarily increase, although I do realise many households have at least two cars. I didn't think it would protrude any further than it does already. I know it will protrude up by another 4.5 metres, as said, but I didn't think it was going to be obtrusive and spoil the line of buildings anyway, which is what we were being asked to look at. I thought it was quite an ingenious piece of work to put it on the end there. And as it matches up very nicely with the existing building, I think it's very difficult to turn down the proposal. So I actually support the application.
Vice chair, I'm so sorry. Thank you, councillor Bentote, I'm so sorry, vice chair, you said another name, and I didn't write it down.
Yes, sorry, Chair, councillor McLean, thank you.
Oh, yes, yes, councillor McLean.
Thank you, Chair. I've listened to this one quite hard. When I did my site visit up there, and thank you for asking us to go, it was worth it. If you go to the photograph on the bottom of page 80, the bottom right-hand corner, it shows the existing property with a one parking space in front of it. In front of that car is actually on-road parking, marked out by the city authorities. To the right of where the car park is in the drive is a lamp standard, which I'm sure we're not going to be taking the lamp standard up when they put the new house in. And also, there's a tree there. So you couldn't put another driveway in front of that property. So all we're going to do, if someone puts a three-bed property in there, is create a minimum of two more car parking spaces needed to be put somewhere, and no means of doing it. So, you know, I totally agree, probably for different reasons, with what the officers come up with. So I shall be voting in favour of the officer's decision. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice chair, is that it for debate?
That's it for debate, Chair, thank you.
So we'll move to the vote. This application has been recommended for refusal. So to make it clear, could you say, oh, I don't know, I'll leave Dave to say what we should say. Dave, over to you for the roll call, what we should say.
Yes, it's for, against, or abstain.
So if you say for, you're voting for refusal?
That is correct.
Chair, may I just interrupt slightly before you move to the vote? I just wondered, because there was some discussion about a change to the reasons for refusal, whether that's something that members would like to consider, or whether the planning officer would like to give some advice on?
Thank you, thank you, Fiona, that's a good point. It was mentioned that we should perhaps identify the parts of the high-quality places SPD. And yes, we did say we'd go back to the officers to have a bit more detail there. I don't know who's going to answer that, Rose or Nick or?
Chair, if I may, on page 63, there are some policies and guidelines I would suggest, including guidelines HGB 2 to 4.
HQ.
HQB, sorry.
Q, HQ?
That's correct, Chair.
Yes, HQB.
Three to four.
Two, three, and four.
Could we have the page number again, please?
Page 63, councillor.
Of the high-quality places SPD?
That's correct.
63, HQB 2, 3, and 4. For those who haven't got the documents under them, HQB 2 says the development should respond positively to the character of the area in terms of scale and massing. 3 says it should be well proportioned, particularly where the proportions are clearly visible from the public realm. And 4, in the case of corner buildings, be designed specifically to address all aspects facing the street. So that is the suggestion to add to the reasons for refusal. Fiona, do I need to take a separate vote on that? Or do I just assume that members are happy with that?
Chair, I think that's been put forward as a suggestion by officers. So unless any member has objection to that, I think you can go with that.
Does any member have an objection to that being added into the reason for refusal?
No, I agree.
Okay, so back to Dave to do the roll call. This has been recommended for refusal. For the reasons on page 76, there's just one reason, development plan DM16. And then we've now specified the high-quality places on page 63, HQB 2, 3, and 4. Over to you, Dave.
Yes, thank you, so this is for refusal. Councillor Evans?
For.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Against.
Councillor Laming?
For.
Councillor McLean?
Or.
Councillor Reed?
Or.
Councillor Raffel?
Or.
Councillor Rutter?
Against.
Councillor Bentote?
Against.
So that's five for refusal and three against refusal, Chair.
So that application has been refused for the reasons set out on page 76 with the addition of the specification in the high-quality places SPD.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we will now move to a lunch break, a longer one than usual.
Chair, my suggestion that we look at the appeals decisions during the half an hour we have through till 1 o'clock. Shorten the day.
We considered that yesterday at our pre-meeting and decided that there might be complaints from members of the public, because they are expecting it to be there. It's a good suggestion.
Would the members of the public normally sit on our appeals decisions? And it will be recorded, so it can be there for anybody to be viewed, they don't take part in the meeting.
I'm in your hands, councillors, really.
I think, chairman, I think the problem, the issue we have is on page, it's the agenda pages before we're numbered. We've got the business items, and we get down to number 10, which is just the case we've done. And then it says the following items will not be considered before 2pm. And then it lists the three items in the afternoon and the appeal paper. So I think to take it in advance of that would fall foul of our agenda, Chair, and our commitment not to take it before the afternoon. I do hear what you say, it'll be recorded, but, you know, that would, you know, that's my reading. And as you say, we discussed it yesterday. I mean, you could take a view from Fiona Sutherland, the solicitor, but, you know, I think the agenda pack is quite clear, Chair.
Sorry, if I may, though, is it not normally that we would take appeals reports in private session anyway?
No, Chair.
No, it's a public report, Chair.
Okay.
But what we could do, Julie, is I did ask, and I don't know if you've had time to do this, I did ask if you could just give us details of any appeals that have gone in recently, specifically on committee. Have you had time to do that, or you've been very busy this week?
Yeah, I've been quite busy, but I have been trying to look at that. And I don't, I haven't managed to boil it down into that level of detail. What I can tell you is that we have 37 live appeals at the moment. Six on behalf of the National Park, three relate to TPO trees, but they're on the same site. We have four applications that are at hearings, they'd be subject to a hearing consideration, two that are subject to public inquiries. And I hadn't got round to counting the rest yet, but the rest were enforcement appeals or joint appeals, where it's a planning and enforcement appeal. But I haven't, I haven't been able to drill down, Chair, as to which ones of those are newer. I think, you know, suffice to say, there's quite a number, you know, that are at one end or the other of the spectrum.
Yeah, you're going to be busy.
Is it possible, Chair, to make a change in the agenda that would allow us to add some words to the effect that if we finish the morning session with time to spare, the committee would be able to look at the appeals decisions, which would shorten the day's work for us, the committee, and also for members of the public, who actually might want to get on with their lives? And it's just a question of changing the words will allow us to do it in a slightly more professional, oh, sorry, not professional's the wrong word, in a slightly more.
No, I'm sympathetic to that. Fiona, give us your legal advice. Could we put next to say things like appeals that this may be heard earlier, subject to the running order of the day or whatever?
It occurs to me, Chair, that you could put it on the morning's agenda and actually, so it could be covered in that part of the meeting if possible, and put a note to the effect that it may be carried over into the afternoon if time does not permit. So that might actually be a better way of doing it.
Yeah, yes.
Bringing it forward.
Okay. Shall we do that, members?
I would be very happy with that.
Yeah, then we don't have to waste our time, because it's quite a long break. Roger, are you wanting to say something? No.
No.
No, your picture's flashing up and down. And I know there have been lots of changes over the planning legislation, which we're all coming to grips with. But there is going to be training on that. I mean, it's only at consultation stage. And I know one of the training days is September 21st. That is for the southern Parishes, is it? 21st? Anyway, perhaps we can clarify that later. So if there's no other business, we will close the morning session, and we will reconvene at 2 o'clock to consider the next item.
Thank you, Chair, could I remind members to log out of MS Teams and join again at 10 to 2?
Right, I'm a little bit dubious about that, Dave, because I'm not sure I'm going to get back in.
I will try to get you into the meeting, Chair.
So what was that, sorry?
I will try to get you back in.
You'll get me back in?
Yes. And I certainly had a problem getting in this morning. And so did I.
Can some councillors stay logged in, please?
Yes, okay, Chair, if members have had problems getting in, if they could stay logged in.
If you've had problems, like, you can stay logged in. Otherwise, if you didn't have any problems, then please log out and log back in. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thank you.